Good evening. My name is Sandy Glynn and I'd like to welcome you to this evening's Candidates Forum. This forum is being presented by the Paradise City Forum, which is a proactive, nonpartisan coalition, open to all concerned citizens, for the purpose of improving the quality of life in Northampton. For audience members interested in becoming involved in the Paradise City Forum, or who simply want more information about the group, we'll be passing around a sign in sheet. For those watching this on their cable channel, you can visit our website at www-paradisacityforum.org. The Paradise City Forum would like you to know that it does not endorse any particular candidate tonight. Our only interest is in providing informative discussion about the issues that affect Northampton. This evening, we're delighted to have the candidates from Wards 1, 4, and 5, and at this point, I'd like to welcome them and introduce them to you. And starting with the far left, we have, from Ward 1, Maureen Carney. And next to Maureen is Joseph M. Musterka. Next, from Ward 4, we have Darrell G. Lefleur. Sitting next to him is David Narcoitz from Ward 4. Next, from Ward 5, we have David Murphy. And last but not least, from Ward 5, is Kathleen Silva. Finally, I want to welcome and introduce our moderator, Annalise Fonza, who is an urban planner and a doctoral student in the Department of Landscape Architecture and Regional Planning at the University of Massachusetts, and a former legislative aide to Massachusetts State Representative Benjamin Swan from Springfield. She'll be explaining the evening's format, and so I'll turn the program over to her now.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you to the Paradise City Forum. It's my pleasure to moderate tonight's event, one of, actually, three forums that I've had the opportunity to moderate this fall. So we're here tonight to hopefully be informed about the candidates running for city council in Northampton, and a little bit about the process, about what tonight will look like. I'll say just a few of the agreements that hopefully we can all agree upon, which are, if you have a cellphone, please turn it to "By Great Link" or whatever it is, so that it won't interrupt the process here. We will not have a bathroom break, but as far as I know, you're free to move around and step outside. I think the men's bathroom is right out here, and the women's bathroom, anyone, is around the corner. Which way? To the left. Out the door and then around to the left. Great. Thank you. Also, I'll just speak briefly here, but I want to thank all of the candidates for agreeing to be here tonight and for sending me their information. And we are going to proceed with opening statements. There'll be time for opening statements. And then I will ask one question to each candidate for the evening, and then we will open it up for the audience to ask questions, to come to the mic, to stand where you are, to state your name and address, and direct questions. You can direct them to me, the moderator, and I'm going to facilitate by way of ward. So if you ask a candidate a question who's in Ward 1, for example, if you ask it of Maureen, she will have three minutes to respond to your question, which should be about two minutes. And we are asking, Paradise City Forum has asked to limit them to questions and not comments, but just questions tonight. So if Maureen is posed with a question, then Joseph would respond and be given time, two minutes, to respond to her. And then we will move to another ward after they both had the opportunity to speak. So it's to try to give each ward time and opportunity to speak to all of your wonderful questions. And let's see. I don't think we're too many... Oh, yes, yes, yes. Timekeeping, again, I will be somewhat of a timekeeper. If you see me stand up, that means you have one minute left, okay? So most of the times, I ask my question, I'll sit down, again, because our focus is on the candidates tonight. But if I do stand up, that means one minute and wrap up the question. And let's see. Oh, yes, I do have another announcement, that tonight's forum will air this Sunday at 11:00 and 8:30 PM, so 11:00 AM and 8:30 PM this coming Sunday on Channel 15. So if you'd like to watch it again and see how the tape turned out, please feel free to tune in. Unfortunately, I live in Holyoke, so I can't actually get this channel. I don't have cable, but I'm sure I will hear about it. And I think that's all. So again, why don't we just give a round of applause to all of tonight's candidates, a way to break the ice. And I believe we'll go in order, we'll go in order with each ward, Ward 1, 4, and then Ward 5. So I will just kind of, we'll go in order, five minutes, three to five minutes for opening statements, and each candidate then would, you're free to introduce yourself and who you are, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much. Maureen?
Thank you. Thank you to the Paradise City Forum and to Annalise Fonza for hosting this discussion. My name is Maureen Carney. I'm a church street homeowner, taxpayer, and candidate for the open ward seat in Ward 1 in Northampton. This is an exciting political season for the city of Northampton. Voters will have choices in a number of races this year, and I'm happy to be one of these candidates, to meet my neighbors in the ward and to talk about the issues we face as a city. I've spent my entire adult life in the valley and have lived in Northampton since 1978. In fact, I was working in 1979 at the then Green Streets Restaurant, and a coworker explained to me how he'd once tried to leave Northampton, but that the Holyoke Range and Mount Tom Range are like slippery hills and would slide back in. And I know many people who have been born here, left and came back, or who came out here to school, left and came back, or who, like myself, arrived here and never left. Many of us made career choices based on the decision first to live here. It's a deliberate life choice. There's something very special about this region that draws us here and keeps us here. So I choose to live here because it's such a beautiful place to live, a rich cultural and educational hub, surrounded by rolling hills, green meadows, and the mighty Connecticut River. We have an energetic city and a civic-minded, free-thinking community of both native inhabitants and newer arrivals. I'm running for city council because I love Northampton. Like many of you, while I could live many places in this country, this is the place for me. I'm active in my community with a record of service on the United Way Board, the Regional Employment Board, the Fire Station Building Committee, and the Housing Authority. Having taught at the Smith Vocational School for nine years, I understand the challenges our schools face. I'm running for this post because I have the experience and the commitment to ask the hard questions and make difficult decisions to move the city forward. I'm an electrician by trade, and now I work to keep businesses here in Massachusetts. Every day, I work with businesses, unions, and workers to help them maintain productivity and retain jobs. In the event of plant closings, I help workers get the retraining they need to find new jobs. More and more, workers are telling me that they want skills that they can use in their community. They want jobs that can't be shifted south or overseas. They want to remain in their community and contribute to a local economy. So we face tough challenges. State and federal policies shift unfair burdens to Northampton. Seniors struggle on fixed incomes, while young families need decent schools. Young people who grew up here can't find good jobs or housing they can afford. I'm for addressing these problems head-on and with broad community input. This is a community that cares about its city. It's our treasure. As Tracy Killer describes Northampton viewed from the Summit House, "The town below fits in the palm of your hand. Shake it, and it snows." I believe that by working together, this city can remain a bright spot on the map and continue to shine a way into the future. So I'm asking for your vote on November 8th and for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Next, we will have Joseph M. Musterka, opening statement.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate the Paradise City Forum, having this forum here to open the candidates up to the people of Northampton, the residents of Northampton, Florence, and Leeds. I'm 30 years old. I've been a Northampton native for my whole 30 years, seen lots of changes, particularly in the way King Street has been built up and schools, the changes in the schools. This is a very, very popular area for education and for businesses growing, small and large businesses growing. One thing I look at is this school right here, the growth of it, the expansion of it, the new fire station. We've got so much more we can do in this community. We've seen restoration of buildings, for example, the Arts and Industry Building up in Florence. I'd like to see, I'd like to be part of this growth in this city, as far as politically and also getting more involved in civic duties, which I have not been a part of that much. There's a lot in this area, not so much just Northampton, but a lot of complementary areas, Amherst, Greenfield, Holyoke, that we tend to complement and they complement us. There's people that come into this city, they never want to leave. They build businesses here, they build houses here. They love this area for one thing or another, whether it's the arts, the diversity, or the growth that you see in this city. And there's Smith College with their educational background and so on and so forth, all the money that comes into that, and the fact that they continue to grow in this city. They show that they want to stay here, they've got plenty of students here that tend to come into this area and stay in this area. Something that attracts people to Northampton, and a lot of it has to do with the diversity and growth and the community bond and the feeling of being here in a community and being able to voice your opinions and be able to join your neighbors in raising families, sending kids to schools, good schools, schools that have some issues but that will be built on as the years go on. Again, I appreciate being able to come out here and talk some politics tonight. Thank you.
From Ward 4, Darrell Lefleur.
Thank you. Hello, hello, audience. My name is Darrell G. Lefleur. I reside on South Street. I'm running for the Ward 4 city council seat. I'm asking for your vote on November 8th, if you live in Ward 4. What brought me here tonight began in May of 2001, when the state was forced to close the Oxbow Bridge, diverting thousands, by local police estimates, 5,000 to 10,000 vehicles a day, to my street. I noticed the cars driving around my daughter's school bus. I began calling the police department and my city councillor, Rita Bliman. Well, there wasn't a lot that could be done at that time, so I decided that I would try to organize the neighborhood, and I posted flyers along South Street, and we formed the South Street Neighborhood Association. After a short while, we decided that the city needed a broader organization to hold forums such as this, and we created the Paradise City Forum. I'm one of the persons that helped facilitate this forum, not this forum this evening, but this forum for the last four or five years. We have addressed topics in Northampton, such as the Hospital Hill ballot questions, Smith College expansion, noise, traffic, and we hope to continue to do such things. Tonight is a forum for the contested ward candidates to come and express their opinions on the city and their wards and what they can do to help their wards. What I feel I can do is to help organize people, people within the ward, on citywide issues as well. My experience along South Street, as well as along West Street regarding Smith College expansion, has brought me to talk to a lot of people, and not everyone agrees with the current policies that the city is undertaking right now. I'm proud to be able to run for office so that I can present an alternative view on the direction our city is headed. Those are my opening remarks.
Also, from Ward 4, David Narcoitz. David?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Narcoitz, and I am a candidate for city council in Ward 4. I live at 31 South Park Terrace, and I've lived in Ward 4 for 12 years, and my wife Yelena and I have two children, age 6 and 7, who attend Bridge Street School. I was born and raised in Western Mass, and I'm a UMass graduate with a BA in Political Science. I'm running for city council for three reasons. One, because I believe deeply in public service, and I've been involved in public service for my entire life. Two, because I believe I have important experience and skills for the job, which I've earned through nearly 20 years of experience in government service. Six years in the United States Air Force, seven years as a congressional aide to four Democratic congressmen, including time in Washington DC as a legislative aide, and time spent here in the valley as an economic development coordinator for Congressman John Olber. Seven years in Northampton city government. I served on the Northampton Zoning Board of Appeals, was elected vice chair, and I currently serve on the Northampton Transportation and Parking Commission, and am the current chair of that committee. And the third and most important reason I'm running is because Northampton has been a great place to live and to work and to raise my family, and I believe I can make a positive contribution to the future of our city and be a strong and effective representative for the people of Ward 4. I've been out knocking on doors, introducing myself to voters all across Ward 4, and it's been a valuable and humbling experience. I've had great conversations with people about parking and water quality, mosquito control, traffic, veterans benefits, winter sidewalk clearing, bar hours, street names, Smith College, property taxes, and a host of other issues that are on the minds of people in Ward 4. I've also enjoyed talking with people about how I'll use my experience to be a positive leader on issues. For example, using my experience as an active parent in our school system and as a longtime member of the Northampton Education Foundation, to be a strong voice on the city council for supporting and strengthening our public schools. Using my professional experience as a Hampshire and Franklin County business liaison to work with Ward 4 business owners to keep our downtown strong and thriving. Using my experience on the Transportation and Parking Commission to work on parking issues and to continue making improvements to our city's parking system downtown and for those who live near downtown. Using my experience in economic development, federal appropriations funding, and transportation policy to provide strong representation and strong oversight for the Hospital Hill project in Ward 4. Working to solve Ward 4 traffic issues and improve safety for bicyclists and pedestrians, a process I've been closely involved with on a citywide level as a member of the Transportation and Parking Commission. Combining my experience doing constituent service in congressional offices with my working knowledge of city departments like the Police Department, the DPW, parking, planning, and others, to help Ward 4 constituents find answers to questions and solutions to problems. These are just a few of the issues that I've looked forward to working on if elected Ward 4 city councillor. My top priority, however, is to work hard to serve my constituents, to be accessible, to be fair-minded, and to be a positive, effective, and effective leader on the Northampton city council. I want to thank the Paradise City Forum for giving us this opportunity tonight to talk about ourselves and answer questions, and I want to ask the people of Ward 4 to support David Narcoitz on November 8th. Thank you very much.
And next to David is David Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Murphy. I live on North Elm Street in Northampton. I grew up in Northampton. I feel very fortunate to be able to say I grew up in Northampton, attended Northampton public schools, and am a graduate of Northampton High School. Went on to Emerson College, where I was an honors graduate with a science degree. I then came back and worked in my family's business. I was involved in communications and traveled around a little bit doing that, but Northampton has always been my home, and I'm very pleased to say that. My local involvement has been both civic with service clubs. I was last year's president of Northampton Rongery. We, like most service clubs, raise funds and donate them to public causes, to the schools, to different charities in town. I have for 10 years been the manager of Charles Park, which has given me some real insights to the importance of open space. As you all know, Charles Park is there, but it's not a city park, it's a private park. We have our own trust, and it is there for the enjoyment of the public, but it's run privately at no expense to the citizens of Northampton, and I think everyone will agree that it's been there. It's absolutely beautiful and a treasure, and I'm very pleased to be involved with it and to continue to be involved with it. I also am going to be on the ballot for something else this time around. I have been Northampton's elector under the will of Oliver Smith, which is a wonderful and unique entity that serves several communities in the area, and I appreciate your support. I'm running for my third term as Northampton's elector, and while everybody knows the interesting building, many people don't know what we do, but we manage an endowment, we invest that endowment, and we distribute the funds to individual local beneficiaries, to nursing students and to young men and women going into the trades, not professions, but just the trades. We have a wedding gift, we have a gift to widows with children under the age of 18, and we also have a fund that benefits the Smith Vocational School. I've been doing that for the last four years and would appreciate your support because I'm on the ballot again. I think I'm unopposed this time, but I'm going to continue in that position because I think it's a wonderful local tradition. It's important, and it's distributed millions of dollars over the year to local residents who are in need. In civic activities, I've been on city committees for going on 20 years. I was involved with the original Cable Television Commission that brought cable to Northampton back in the late '70s, I believe. I was involved in a licensing agreement back then and a relicensing, and I know that's something that's coming up on the agenda now. I do have experience with having dealt with cable operators and licensing them. That could be helpful. I also served, in fact, I served at the time the mayor was also a member of the Northampton Housing Partnership. I spent a term there and dealt with housing issues and particularly affordable housing issues. I'm also in the real estate business, so I'm very familiar with how expensive it is to live in the city, and that's a real issue that will continue to come up for people. I'm currently a member of the Elm Street Historic District Commission, which deals with historical preservation in the Elm Street corridor from the gates of Charles, from Charles Park down to the gates of Smith College, if we work this way down the street, and it regulates all the properties that front on Elm Street, and of course, Smith College is our largest customer with all of their construction projects. I serve as well on the Central Business Architectural Commission, where I'm chair. That does similar functions for the Central Business District, though it's not as strict as a historic district, it does protect the integrity of downtown Northampton, and we feel that we work very well with the individuals that come in to encourage that the integrity remains there, but also that people have an opportunity to grow and expand their businesses, which is very, very important. And the final service I'm doing to the city right now is as a member of the Board of Assessors, which is a very technical activity, but it's a very important one in that it is probably the largest source, real estate property tax is the largest source of income for the city, and the valuations have to be right because the Department of Revenue must approve our values before we're allowed to send tax bills. So it's a very technical activity, but a very important one to the fiscal stability of the city of Northampton. So it's technical, but it's important. Not a lot of people understand it, but it has to be done right for the city to do business. I guess in closing, Northampton's been a great place to live and work for my entire life to this point. I've always been involved with the city to be a helpful citizen and try and make it a better place to live, and I'd like to extend my service to the city as your representative on the city council from Ward 5. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And Kathleen Silva from Ward 5.
Thank you, Annalise. Good evening, friends and neighbors. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Let me begin by thanking Paradise City Forum for putting this forum together, and thanking all of you for taking time out of your day to attend this forum. Now, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Kathleen Silva. I was born and raised in Low Mass, and I've resided here in Northampton on Riverside Drive since 1989. I have a son attending JFK Middle School and a daughter attending Holyoke Community College. I have a bachelor, oh, I'm sorry, I have a business degree from Holyoke Community College and a logistics degree from College of the Air Force in Denton, Colorado. I presently sit on the Board of Directors for the National Association of Government Employees and the Florence Veteran of Foreign Wars Post 8006. I also sit on the Executive Board for the International Brotherhood of Correctional Officers, Local 248. I recently became a member of both the Florence Civic Association and Bay State Village Associations. I am presently employed at the Henry County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer for the last 13 years. Previous to that, I worked for Digital Equipment Corporation for 16 years, and I proudly served in the United States Air Force Reserve for a period of 12 years. My military and corrections experience have taught me to respond to challenges and problems quickly and to attend to all necessary details to find solutions. I'm not connected to anyone in the city, and this would be my very first elected position, although it's not my first involvement with city life. Over the past four months, I've been taking a crash course in the workings of the councils, school board, and other city agencies, attending lots of meetings and asking a lot of questions. I possess a fast learning curve, and I've really enjoyed learning about my neighbors' concerns and making myself available to the residents of Ward 5. If I'm fortunate enough to represent Ward 5 on the council, here are some goals I would like to work towards. I'd like to reduce speeding traffic by installing some red light cameras and hiring a part-time person to maintain speed traps. More frequent bus-in-band services for the seniors and disabled residents, and the promotion of non-motorized modes of transportation. I'd like to work in conjunction with the school committee members and work to restore the community officers back to the schools. I'd like to work with the mayor and the councils for the return of our city's fair share of local aid and try to bring new businesses back into the city. I'd like to continue working on open space acquisition and dealing with sub-development concerns. I'd like to maintain city services at the level that they are at while helping to control the city finances. I'd like to install some more lighting at both Meadowbrook Apartments and Florence Heights and to help our outstanding police department continue to keep our crime low here in the city. If elected city councillor of Ward 5, I will work hard for you and on your behalf. Thank you.
Again, and thank you to all the candidates for your courage and for your willingness to run for office and to participate in city politics in Northampton. I'm going to take just a little of the moderator's privilege and start from this end, so we'll go back this way, and begin with questions, one question per candidate, which means my first question is to Kathleen. I know she wants the first question, right?
Right.
They don't know a question. My question, based on the information I've read, is what do you think is the most pressing public safety issue in Northampton, and how will you work to address that if I'm at the city council?
Firstly, I think the most pressing is the traffic, is traffic issues. And a couple ways that I would like to try to alleviate that would be, I'd like to have some red light cameras installed at some of the major intersections. They kind of go through and they take a photograph of the license plate on your car if you're over a certain amount of speed. I'd like to work to hire a part-time person and not necessarily attach them to the police department, but maybe attach them to the parking commissioner, who does random speed traps throughout the city to generate revenue for the city and also to help people maintain the proper speeds. I'd like to work at some of the minor, excuse me, minor intersections, like the one at Federal Street and Riverside Drive, to maybe look at some four-way stops there. I'd like to work with residents to cut back some of the bushes that might be hiding some of the visibility at some of the intersections, and I'd like to use some traffic calming measures when roads are repaved.
Thank you. Next question to David Murphy. Let's talk about historic districts and historic preservation, and what specifically are your thoughts on historic preservation in Northampton, specifically relative to the conversation around the Community Preservation Act, so we can tie some of that in, the thinking about historic preservation and what that kind of brings to the table? kind of brings to the table with CPA debate, to speak, CPA question.
We have quite a few players actually dealing with historic preservation. We have the Historic Society, which is a private society. We have the Historic Commission, which is chaired by Chris Kennedy, who's in the back of the room. We have the Elm Street Historic District that deals geographically with a state historic district that goes from here down to Smith College. And then we have the Central Business Architectural District, which while not a strict historic district, deals with the Central Business District, which is a zoning district. Then, in addition to all of that, we would have resources, if CPA passes, there'd be resources which would probably then be administered by the committee that would be appointed or elected with the successful passing of the CPA, that would draw members from many different constituencies, and I hope for elected ones, which would be involved in the funding of projects, probably from those different entities. So there are a lot of players that have a lot of, some specific interests, some general interests in the history of the city. And it was very, it was very obvious that this was something that was spreading city-wide recently when the demolition ordinance that I think people followed was being debated by the City Council before that was passed. It was input from all different parts of the city. I've been dealing with Elm Street in downtown, but people in Florence and people in Leeds came forward to say there were things in their, their parts of the community that they wanted to protect as well. So it isn't, it isn't just CPA, though CPA is the topic on the table now. Historical preservation is one of the issues that that covers. But there's any number of independent groups that have been working on different parts of the city. For instance, Florence Civic and Business has their own museum, even though historic isn't in their name, they maintain a museum of Florence memorabilia, and I think may be involved to try and, to try and work with perhaps some CPA funds too. So it's, there's a lot of people on a lot of different committees, working in a lot of different areas to work on historic preservation in Northampton.
Thank you. Thank you to David and to Kathleen, Ward Five, right? Ward Four. David, I can really appreciate the fact that you, at one point, are a stay-at-home dad. We would appreciate that. What are your thoughts on community and family development in Northampton? And really, I'm thinking also the way that the state, the legislature plays a part in that kind of development, especially in the recent light of the, I guess you could say, the minimizing of the CBG funds and so on and so forth from the federal government. So what are your thoughts on community and family development in Northampton?
Well, you mentioned the stay-at-home dad. I didn't mention that in my opening statement, but about eight years ago, I took a very interesting career change. I left the work that I'd been doing in the Congress and became a stay-at-home father to my children. My first daughter was born in 1997, and I stayed home with her, and I continue to stay at home when my second daughter came along. So family is very important to me, and I think family is a very important element for folks living in Northampton. You talked about the challenges we face with the state and federal. Certainly, the many cutbacks that we faced at the state level and the federal level have had a serious impact on the things we're able to do in terms of community and family. I look at our school system, for example, and the cuts that we faced over the last five years that are approaching about 20%, I think, at this stage of the game. We've had to lose about 33 personnel in the school department. In my own personal experience, my daughter was in a first grade class year of nineteen children. My second daughter is in a first grade class this year of 26 children. So we're feeling the effects of it, of those cuts that are coming down from the state and the federal government. And it's required us to be more creative, and it's required us to try to find other ways. One of the ways I think it's important is that Northampton has a really good community spirit in terms of pulling people together to try to find alternative resources. I've been involved with an organization called the Northampton Education Foundation for the last eight years, and we've raised thousands of dollars for the public schools as a way to try to supplement some of those funds that have been lost. I just concluded with a group of folks in April, a campaign that went for three years to try to build an endowment fund for our public schools, which raised nearly 900,000 in gifts and pledges. There's a real strong community spirit here, and I think people are willing to come together. But I also think we have to come together as a community, and we have to address some of these issues at the state level. There was a very important report that just recently came out about state aid and about the relationship between state government and municipal governments. And I think that has some very important information in terms of where we go with Proposition Two and a Half and the constraints we've been faced with. And I think we need to work with communities, not just Northampton, but we need to work with other communities who are feeling the same effects. And I think we need to communicate to our state legislators, to our leaders in Boston and in Washington, that we need to take another look at the relationship between the state government and between city governments. And we need to try to restore some of the balance so that so much of the burden does not get shifted to communities like Northampton, which then has to make cuts, deep cuts, in some of the community programs that we rely on.
Thank you. Daryl, also from Ward Four, Daryl Lefleur. What is it that you would say is the most challenging aspect of the Community Preservation Act, especially in light of the Smith College proposal and the proposal for expansion? So what do you see as the most challenging aspect of that act and in light of what's happening, what's met? And I guess you could say just development as a whole in Northampton?
Well, I'm supporting the CPA. It's one thing my opponent and I agree on. And one of the ideas that I'm putting forth for the community is to consider taking 15 Arnold Avenue by eminent domain and using CPA funds to replace an affordable house that was burned down there. And the CPA funds could be used to take this property and put this into municipal ownership. The CPA and Smith expansion in general, the CPA is designed for historic preservation, open space, and affordable housing. The Smith College expansion right now is slated to remove homes in the Green Street, West Street area. The loss of these homes would require funds to replace them elsewhere. And at this juncture, Smith has offered to replace some of the units on Bedford Terrace, but that doesn't address the other units in the area. If the expansion is going to remove the entire Green Street, West Street area as far as homes go, where are all these people going to be relocated? And how will they be relocated? What land will be used to relocate them? One idea that Smith has brought forward is to use the 27 acres of land they have on Lyman Road. And that is still unclear as to how many homes could be put there, when and if they would be put there. And right now, I believe that there is no infrastructure on Lyman Road to support these homes, but it is a viable idea for Smith to relocate there, which brings into question the traffic that would be created for residents along South Street and Lyman Road. So the CPA in relation to Smith College, I'm not sure there's a direct relation, but what I'm proposing as an individual is that we look at saving that neighborhood by taking a piece of property on Arnold Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Daryl, and Dave from Ward Four. Now from Ward One, Joseph Imsturka. In construction for about ten years, and it's hard work. I'm asking your take on community and business development in Northampton, from that perspective, from the perspective of someone who's been in the construction industry for a while. Your take on commercial and business development?
My take on the commercial and business development in this city has been, I've grown up off King Street. I've seen several businesses come and go. Businesses such as McDonald's and Burger King and Stop &amp; Shop have stayed. They've been a good anchor for King Street and even the downtown area. They bring people in. It's someplace for people to shop, someplace cheap for them to shop. One thing I've seen over the past few years is vacant buildings on King Street. And one in particular is Price Chopper, the old Price Chopper site. If I'm coming in from the, into this city from the north and I see that site, I'm seeing a city of depression. As far as I'm concerned, King Street is a highway business. There's too much talk about making it look real nice, pedestrian-friendly. I don't walk down to King Street, I drive. I walk through downtown. Downtown's a nice area, nice historical buildings, some greensapes, landscapes around the downtown area. There's also been some vacant buildings in downtown lately. Businesses moving out, businesses closing because price is too high. We need to work as a community and as a government to build these businesses back up, combine businesses, figure out innovative ways to build smaller businesses in these big vacant boxes that are left on King Street. I don't, I've never seen a city that's so, so strong in diversity have so many vacant buildings. And I worked between Connecticut and Massachusetts, and this is, it shouldn't happen this way. And the government's sitting there saying, well, let's make it look nice on the highway. Vacant buildings does not make it look nice. Vacant buildings make it look depressed, does not make this city look like it's growing, does not make this city look like it's developing anything. And a couple of years ago, the override on Two and a Half passed. Commercial property needs to take a little bit of the brunt of the taxes away from the residents. I hate to see taxes being paid by residents that could be paid by these vacant buildings being occupied. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph. And Maureen, I can certainly appreciate all the work you've done. We're knocking on doors, asking people their thoughts on traffic, on mobile safety, so that's what I wanted to ask you about. I want to ask you your thoughts on trafficway development. I've heard a little bit from Kathleen, but your thoughts on trafficway development and redevelopment, really kind of the connection between the auto and the bike and foot and accessibility as well. So your thoughts on trafficway development?
Okay, thanks. And really, a lot of these issues about traffic safety, as you brought up, were expressed to me by people that I speak to when I've been going door-to-door. It's one and an array of issues that people are concerned about in the city. And of course, since we really had a tragic accident in the city not long ago, it's something that everybody should be concerned about. I want the city to continue looking at all of the forms of transportation that people use. And people do walk in the city. People, people walk all over the city, as well as bicycle and skateboard and drive. But I walk on King Street. I know people, I know people who do walk on King Street. I know people who walk up Bridge Road. And finally, they do have sidewalks that will allow children to walk from the Jackson Street School area all the way up to JFK. It's something that finally we can be proud of. People in this city need to prioritize what they want. Do we want safe, safe walkways for all of our students going to schools, for all of our residents to walk? And then figure out how we're going to do that, plan that out. I'm really glad that the mayor has initiated this Sustainable Northampton Plan that will bring all of these interests together, talk about how we can get around a little more safely in this city. Some specific questions and concerns that people have had in the ward, certainly are, you know, the intersection at Jackson Street and Prospect Street. It may take some looking at. The intersection of King Street and North Street, Summer Street. Many people have complained to me about, about that being a dangerous spot, that there are people who drive straight through at the left-only turn, and pedestrians fear for their life when they try to walk around there. So, you know, I really support this city taking a really careful look, and I know that a lot of work has been done, to try to look at traffic patterns, to try to look at easing the ability, making clear walkways for people who really do need to get around. Especially in these days when we're starting to look at, you know, $3, $5, who knows how much we'll be paying for gas. I know people, I have friends who just toss their keys away and are just driving, riding their bikes around all the time. And, you know, it's great. And actually, one person said to me, you know, this is one good thing about these gas prices, is it gets people out of their cars. It's fine to say here on October 2nd. I know that we won't be saying the same thing in the middle of January, but maybe we'll be skiing, who knows? I think we need to be, I think we need to be aware that many people like to have alternative ways to get around the city and support them.
Thank you. Thank you again. Very good. Thank you to all of you. Well, now it's your turn, the audience, to ask questions. I'm going to try to do this in a helpful way again, so one hand already. So what we'll do is take the question, you'll address it to, you can address it directly to the panel, to all of the candidates or to the candidate you want. And then their opponent will have time to speak to the question as well. And then we will move to a different ward so as to give each ward some time this evening. So right now, it is 7:50, time check. And we'll go until you get tired. And we have this place until about, well, until nine. At about quarter to nine, no later than quarter to nine, we will stop for closing statements. Okay? So we have a little bit of time to ask questions, and hopefully they've said enough. Come already with your own ideas, with questions, not comments. Please limit them to questions, to ask each of the, or to ask the candidates. So we have questions until about seven, or eight, 8:40. I'll come, you know, back to say a few words of closing and then offer the candidates the last words of the night. So first question, yes, ma'am?
This is for everybody. Which mayor or candidate do you support and what?
Oh, for everyone.
Yes.
Let's see, let's see where to start. This is for everyone. Why don't we start with Ward Twenty, Maureen?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for the question. I'm supporting the mayor. Claire Higgins has done a great job, not only in her three terms as mayor, but her previous two terms on the City Council. I think it's really important to support honest, hard-working people in city government, and that's what we have here. You know, I may not agree with everything that comes out of this, out of this administration all the time, but I know that there is an open process. I really do feel as though there's the opportunity for people to express their concerns and a real, a real effort to listen and understand.
Thank you. I'm gonna, since it's a question for everyone, if you don't mind, we'll limit this response to about one minute for each candidate. Is that okay? Okay. Joseph?
At this point, I would support Mayor Higgins. She's been very vital in a lot of the stuff that has happened in this city, such as the rebuilding and additions to schools, a new fire station. She's got a strong leadership in this city. And she's got a great support staff that she's put together at City Hall, great people to work with if you call and you've got questions or comments. And she stands up for the community. She doesn't back down from anything. So my vote would be with Mayor Higgins. And over Maureen.
I'm an undecided voter at this time. There are some issues that Mayor Higgins has entered into, for instance, the development agreement with Smith College. And I don't agree with some aspects of that agreement. On the other hand, I don't know Mr. Feldman at all, so I'm really looking forward to hearing what the two candidates have to say before I cast my On the other hand, I don't know Mr. Feldman at all, so I'm really looking forward to hearing what the two candidates have to say before I cast my vote.
Thank you, Darryl. David?
Thank you. Well, this is a tricky one because I, I know both candidates very well and I'm close friends with both of them. So it's been an interesting campaign. There's another side story I won't go into about the campaign, but I think it's an important debate that we're having. I think it's important to have every two years, have candidates have an opportunity to talk about, for incumbents what they've done and for challengers how they think they could do a better job. At this point, I'm supporting Mayor Claire Higgins for reelection.
Thank you, David Murphy.
And I'm supporting Mr. Feldman, I'll be the odd one out here. And it, my support for him is not a reflection on what the mayor's done, because what the mayor has done is a very good job at things that she's done. But she doesn't, and I'll look right at her, she doesn't run between one time when I don't say, "Mayor Higgins, you need to work more on economic development." And she knows that, because every time she sees my smiling face, I almost always tell her that. I think it's a wonderful opportunity that we this time have two great candidates. This is, be the best mayoral election we've had in a long time, because both individuals are qualified, both individuals are knowledgeable, that they actually know like each other and are going to run a respectful campaign. They differ in very few issues except the one of economic development. I think we have not taken advantage of our opportunities for going on ten years. And I think when we have cuts in state aid, when the city needs money, the city can't turn to its economic, to its commercial tax base, because that's been shrinking, not growing. And we have to pay attention to that, because it's an important source of revenue for us. So if I had to pick one difference and one reason why I'm supporting Mr. Feldman, it's because of his promise to do something about economic development. But again, I don't that want that to be a reflection on the mayor, because we know each other, we've worked together for a very long time. And I think on the things she makes initiatives with, she does a very good job.
Thank you, David. Kathleen?
I'm actually also undecided at this time. I've been doing a lot of research on the past history of the mayor and some this, some plans that she has moving forward at this time. And I'm also doing some research on Mr. Feldman and some of the statements that he's made during his debates. And I look forward to further information in, on his, on their debates, if you may.
Thank you. Okay, next question, I see over here on the side. Yes, yes. Name and address, I think we said, right?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Eleanor and I live in Northampton. My question is to David Murphy. Since you are a businessperson and also an assessor, I'm wondering what your particular take on the best way, what your particular take is on the best way to bring about economic development in Northampton?
Now, the, to promote it requires aggressive planning and zoning. I don't necessarily think that the zoning changes made for King Street the last time around were particularly well thought or effective. Take an example, how many people have been here long enough to remember the Coca-Cola plant on King Street? Hands. Therefore, you remember the hardware store and you know the CVS is there now. So, the Coca-Cola plant was built under one generation's zoning, the hardware store on another, and CVS under another. Who wants to vote for which one is better on King Street? Does any one stand out in your mind as being any better than the others? That's why we've got problems on King Street. And with the decreasing commercial industrial tax base, we've got to be focusing on that, encouraging people to go there. And I don't necessarily think that we're doing that. So, I think there's the interest to come to this city, but we can't compare King Street to downtown. You know, King Street sells things other than jelly beans, posters, and, as restaurants. And, and I think downtown has its place and King Street has its place as a transitional commercial strip development area. I think it should be developed in that way, because we need the tax revenue.
So Kathleen, in response, would you like to make a response? If you feel the pass or make a response to the question?
The only thing, I'd make a response. The only thing that I would like to do would be to work with the Chamber of Commerce and the Planning Department to somehow put some kind of plan together to bring in businesses. I'm not really sure at this point how you do that, but I know, one of the things I'd like to, to, to do, I think would be helpful, is to give incentives to businesses that come, that, that maybe give incentives to their employees who might ride bikes to, to their jobs instead of taking cars. I mean, I'm not really familiar with how you go about it, but I know that, you know, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Planning Board to bring businesses in.
Thank you. Thank you. That's Ward 5, candidates speaking on that question. So, we will field the question now to either Ward 1 or Ward 4. Yes?
My name is Lila Lewis. I live in Ward 1, and in full disclosure, I'm married to the current city councillor for 1. And my question is for Maureen Carney. Where we live, Ward 1, also around where Smith is, the property values have been skyrocketing. Lots of people who work downtown and people, farm and policemen, can't afford to live in Northampton. Do you have thoughts on that?
Certainly. It's really important that this city has enough of a housing stock to, for people who grow up here to be able to afford to live here. And that means a variety of housing options for people, not only single-family homes, but certain, I mean, there are plenty of people who are single individuals. There are seniors, there are families. And we need to be able to really plan out, and that's why I go back to that, that talk about a comprehensive plan for the city, having an understanding demographically of who lives here and then how we're all going to live here and how we're going to, how we're going to pay to live here. I think it's something that really needs to be examined, care, I don't have easy answers to that, but it's certainly a priority and I think needs to be. We have people who, I, I mean, I've talked to on the phone who would stay in Ward 1, but they say, in fact, they're leaving Northampton because they can't afford to live here. So, it, it's just something that I feel very strongly about, I know you feel strongly about, and I, I don't know anybody really in the city who doesn't feel strongly that, you know, it's very expensive to live here, especially with regards to housing.
Joseph, would you like to respond?
My only response is this. There's a friend of mine who works for the DPW, and she loves this area, she loves to work here. She just can't afford to live here, though. And we're paying her money out of tax coffers, and she can't afford to live here. It's a sad day when people who work here cannot just stay here in this city.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a question to Ward 1, so that leaves Ward 4 at the moment. Ward 4, question? Yes. I'm sorry.
I have a question for Darryl LaFleur. What would you like to see as a zoning plan for Hospital Hill?
The, the way the Hospital Hill is zoned right now, I believe the south campus is zoned as a business park and the north campus is zoned as a rather large subdivision. And I believe there's some commercial planned for Route 66, which would cut through the campus. The, my thoughts are that it's called the Village at Hospital Hill, but it's not really a village. I, I look at Florence as a village and possibly Northampton at one point in its history as a village. And I personally would like to see a more holistic growth up there, allow artists and entrepreneurs to go in, because it's very restricted right now. And the plan stretches out over a twenty-year period. So I would like to see the zoning loosened so that we could reuse the infrastructure that is reusable. Some of it's reusable, some of it is not. Some of the buildings are reusable, some of them are not. And I would like to see something that would more mirror Florence as a village, as opposed to a subdivision on one side and a business park on the other.
Thank you. And so from Ward 4, David, would you care to respond?
Sure. I think we all know that, that the Hospital Hill project has been in planning for, well, ten, twenty, I guess since 1982 when the whole project began. We've gone through numerous community processes. We've had a Planning Board process, we've had a NEPA process, we've had a Citizens Advisory Council process. And these were good people working hard to try to come up with the best solution that they could, the best proposal that they could for the use of Hospital Hill. In terms of the residential use, I think it's, I think there's a really good mix, actually, of, of both market-rate housing and affordable housing. That's something we've all talked about this evening on this panel, about the need for affordable housing. And the 200 units that are going to be up there, it's, half of them are affordable. There are apartments for folks, possibly for folks like, like Joe's friend who works in the DPW, that would allow somebody, a single person, an entry-level person, to have an opportunity to live in our city, which I think is a good thing. There's also an assisted living facility, so we're going to have multi-generational age groups living in Hospital Hill. So, we do have challenges, yes, there are challenges in terms of, of how we develop that, that property and how we mitigate any of the impacts on Ward 4. But at this point, I don't know that we can, that we can change course. We need to go ahead and follow through on the plans that so many people have worked so hard and so long to develop.
Thank you, Ward 4 candidates. Okay, so at this point, we can hear from anyone, any, to any, any ward, question to any ward. Yes?
I'm Ed Hales, I live at 171 now at Dup Street. You all have spoken, spoken about how wonderful Northampton is, and I've lived here my, all my life, and I think it's the greatest city in the world. But I think we all know that all is not well in paradise. If you talk to the average person on the street, many people have complaints. For each of you, this is a question for each one of you. What do you consider as the most pressing, urgent problem facing the city today that you would like to see addressed immediately?
Okay, and which, which way would we like to go? We came from that way this time, so Kathleen, would you care to start? Me, all right?
Always give me the hard questions.
Start here.
The most pressing thing that I, that I feel are facing the residents today is the increased tax burden and the increased fees and just what they have to pay to maintain their, their current lifestyle here in Northampton. They not only are getting hit with increased water and sewer rates, taxes, property taxes, but every time they turn around, some fee or something they purchase in a store because of fees, new fees imposed by the city for different permits and licenses are going up. The state licenses are going up for fishing and hunting, things like that. The heating season's supposed to be at between five and $800, more this year for people than last year. So that's what I feel is the most pressing thing going on in this city right now.
Thank you, Kathleen. David?
My concerns are financial as well. And it's very obvious lately that when, when the state can't be trusted to do business with us in a reliable way and we are forced to live on our own means from within our own city, our tax base is very important. I talked a little about it earlier. But every, many of our problems take money to solve. Our schools do, our police do, our fire does, DPW. Everything takes money, and the source of that money and developing as much revenue as we can from within our boundaries is very important to the future. That's something, as an assessor, we see coming years and years in advance when we watch the trend of property development, which is where a lot of our tax money, the most of it, comes from. So that's very, very important. I mean, if everybody thinks of their own reality, it takes more to put gas in their car, it will take more to heat their homes this winter. Well, what kind of scale does the city have those problems on? It has multiple buildings to heat, kids to bus, all kinds of things to do. So each and, each and every one of us see our own financial problems magnified many, many times across the city's need. So, that, that's my greatest concern, is that we work, work very, very hard to develop our tax base and to get internal sources of revenue going, so that the next time the state has problems, and they're not out of the woods yet, or same with the federal government, that we're in a position to take better care of ourselves, because often we're left alone to do that by other government entities.
Thank you. Thank you, David Murphy. Okay, David, your turn.
Thank you. I'm gonna sort of build on my colleagues, what they've said so far. I think definitely the municipal finance issue is really, I mean, at the heart of all the issues we're facing in terms of trying to provide good schools, trying to provide safer streets, trying to do the infrastructure improvements that we need to do, trying to do the capital improvements that we need to do to keep our city buildings and our city trucks and our city vehicles running. But we're in a situation now where we have really not a lot of predictability in terms of what sort of state revenues we're going to receive each year. That was one of the things pointed out in the report I referenced earlier, that there was a real lack of predictability in terms of what municipalities could count on in terms of their share of state aid. The other issue is not, municipality is not having a lot of local control in terms of raising revenues locally. So I think we're, we're sort of straitjacketed at times by this, by this reliance that we have on property taxes, which is a, which is a creation of the state. Yet we don't have the resources that we're sending to Boston coming back to us in a fair and equitable manner. And that's true for the way we fund our schools. Northampton does not, does not receive a fair share under the current formula. It's true in terms of Chapter 90, which pays for the road projects we want to do. We talk about the improvements we want to make in safety. It's true about all the other forms of aid. CDVG monies that we rely on from the federal government are reduced. So I think that the municipal finance is really the biggest challenge that we're facing, because it's really the key to everything else we want to do in the city, to keep it a strong city.
Thank you, David. Also for Ward 4, Darryl?
I think the, the issue that comes to my mind is the exploding residential development in the city. The Planning Department has stated that residential development costs the city more in services than it brings in in property taxes. Residential development brings more traffic, which increases our costs to maintain our roads. It brings more students to the schools, which increases our costs to run our schools. This development in the outlying areas, people are very concerned about. People that live in a rural area now are faced with the idea that they may not live in a rural area in the future. One of the reasons I'm supporting the Community Preservation Act is to preserve some of our open space. It certainly could be used to purchase at fair market value, open space to be used by the community. And another reason I'm supporting it, because of the financial aspects. Right now, our community is transferring money out of our city. Every time a piece of property is purchased, every time a deed is transferred, every time someone refinances their home, a fee is paid which goes to the state. We're not getting that back unless we pass the CPA. If we get the CPA passed, we can get our money back. It's the only way we're going to get our money back. And then we could use it for potentially something like Forbes Library. Right now, that's over a million dollars over budget, and that means the taxpayers will have to pay that. If we pass the CPA, the state would pay half of the tab.
Thank you, Darryl. From Ward 1, Joseph?
The economic issues, I, I agree with, but one other concern I had, and I feel it should be at the top of the agenda, is traffic safety. Got too many roads in the city here, and I agree with the other candidates here as far as on South Street. And I live off Bridge Road, where it's an extremely dangerous place to walk. Regardless of if you're on the sidewalk or you're walking across the street, you've got fast vehicles, you've got trucks on a road that probably shouldn't be handling the, the trucks. And the traffic issues have to be looked at, not as individual streets, I think, but as overall throughout the city, the overall infrastructure throughout the city. A study would cost money, but putting in traffic calming measures might help alleviate some of this. We talked about the crash down at Smith College, that, that's one issue, but kids walk into school from Jackson Street area up to JFK. Cars driving forty, fifty, sixty miles an hour down Bridge Road. It doesn't matter whether they're walking in a sidewalk, anything can happen.
Thank you, Joseph. And Maureen, Ward 1?
Thank you. I agree with most of my colleagues who pointed to the...
I agree with most of my colleagues who pointed to the, the economic crisis that many people feel that they're in, in this, not only in this city, but in the state and in the country. Many people do feel the real crunch. However, it's hard to point to one single particular pressing issue that dominates all the rest. I think that, I think that we need to be taking a multitasked approach to all of the challenges we face in this city. Regarding the economic problem, it's clear though, that, that Northampton and all of Western Mass really does not get its fair share in terms of state aid. And that's, it's been a complaint for years, and I think that the, the present administration has voiced it, I've heard it on the council level, and I know that our state delegation is aware of it and works very hard to try to, to try to bring what's fair to Western Mass here. In the meanwhile, we do need to do a lot of work on our own, and part of that is educational, really talking to people and trying to make the connections between what it is that we expect and need for city services, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for those. And so, this is something that needs to, but there is no quick fix, it's not going to happen overnight. We are, we are going to be pinching, it's going to be a difficult winter for many people. I think that we have a strong community though, and I think that there, people are generally look in on their neighbors and try to help out in what ways they can. That's no quick solution or easy solution, but it certainly, it certainly fosters the kind of community and, and talking about issues that helps people to really know the bigger picture. Northampton is not an island. We really do need to have economic development plans, as have been explored, that, that really reach across the whole region, that take advantage of the, the numerous resources that we have up and down the valley. A couple of days ago, there was a, a spread in the Gazette on the, the Knowledge Quarter. And I know that at the, at the Regional Employment Board level, and at the Planning Commission level, and other people have really been looking at ways that we can try to make use of all of the educational institutions we have in this, in this region, the spin-off potentials from the university, ways to really bring some of these resources into viable businesses, starting small, possibly incubated, but certainly to foster and grow and help, and hope that, that these would be potential job opportunities for people in the region. But again, this is gonna, this could be a very difficult winter for many people, and I think that we need to be aware of that as a community and really help each other.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, we're open, yes.
My name is Marjorie Hester, I live on Sonic Street. I have just a question for all the candidates. Occasionally, the council will take a position on a national issue. For example, I think it was two thousand and two, the council passed a resolution defending the Bill of Rights. Many people were supportive of this, others said the council should stick purely to local issues. And I'd like to know your thoughts on the council becoming involved in taking decisions on national issues.
Okay, well, we'll begin with Maureen, Ward One.
Thanks for the question, I think that's really important. I think the, one really important reason that the council and, and individuals certainly take public stance on national issues is that we're not, we're not an island. We're certainly impacted by what happens in Boston at the state level, and certainly in Washington, and, and certainly all over the globe. I think that when we can clearly see a direct impact in Northampton for, for particular national issues, whether it be policies, or initiatives, executive action, it's not inappropriate, and in fact, especially when it's driven by constituent concerns, many people hear, hear about these from the folks in their ward, they may get calls, and I, and I, I support that. I think that that's not an inappropriate action at all by the city council.
Thank you, Maureen, Joseph.
I feel as far as taking a stand on national issues, it can kind of go as base, base by base issue there. But as the voice of the residents of our wards, we should at least look into it and research what the national issue is and how it impacts us. As Maureen stated, the national and state levels do impact local level funding, safety, and even our government sending people to war. It, it impacts a lot of stuff, up and down, from the national down to a local level.
Thank you. Ward Four, Darryl.
That's a difficult question to answer. I think it would have to be a case-by-case basis. I don't know if the question is designed to say that the city council would have to agree on something nine to nothing in order to pass a resolution, if this would come from the residents contacting their counselors, or if this would be a top-down decision where the counselor used their personal opinion to make that decision. So I know myself, I would have to know what the issue was, but I would like to know that there was also the opportunity for minority opinions to be noted in any resolutions passed.
Thank you, Darryl. And also for Ward Four, David.
Thank you. I think when, when national issues affect local communities, I think, you know, local government has an obligation to be able to, to express the view of, of the community on an issue. Again, I think as a ward representative, if we hear from constituents that have concerns about issues, they want to, whether it be, you know, the impact of the Patriot Act on their local library, whether it be recently a proclamation was passed regarding the, the safety of our troops that were leaving Florence to go off to Iraq, I think that's a perfectly appropriate sort of a resolution. It touches on a national issue, but it also is a local issue. So I think local government has, has a right to, to express an opinion on national issues. And I think the city council, as the legislative body of, of Northampton Government, certainly is appropriate to do that.
Thank you. Ward Five.
Here, here I go being different again. Last I checked, Northampton didn't have a Department of State. At least I don't, I don't, just I don't think we do. We've spent the last hour and a half talking about serious issues that are concrete and on the plate of the city council. And I think I would like to deal with those issues first, and we've talked about all sorts of things that we need to deal with, that we actually have some control over, and I think we should probably try and spend our time on those issues first. We, we still have a courthouse along, and we can still go out and put signs around our necks and talk about anything we'd like to talk about out there. But I think the city's business comes first in the council chamber, so I'd be in favor of, of trying to keep our focus on city issues which we're responsible for dealing with.
Kathleen.
Yes, I think, I think that it would be all right for the council to take a position on a decision that nationally, a national decision that would impact or affect residents here in Northampton, such as the Florence unit going off to Iraq. That has impacted a tremendous amount of people who live right here in the city, and has created some hardships for a lot of individuals and a lot of families whose sons and fathers and brothers are, are gone. So I think it's, it's perfectly legitimate for the council to take positions on national issues.
Thank you. Okay, so other questions? I believe it's open for it. Either of the wards. See a hand that came.
Mike Kirby, yes, State, not State Street, Summer Street. I don't know where I live. No, I want to talk about State Street, I guess, maybe an answer to the question to the Ward One candidates, is that our concerns there are very parochial. We've had a tremendous increase in traffic on State Street, it's been very hazardous to bike on it, we've had crashes. How would you deal with the problem of increased traffic and accidents in the State Street area?
So this is a question for Ward One? Either one of you would like to go first?
Well, oh sure, okay. And it's not the first time I've heard that concern. As we know, people, as you just pointed out, people use State Street as a parallel road to King Street. They cut up, they'll, they'll cut up Summer Street and cut, and come down as a way to avoid King Street. They'll, they'll do all sorts of maneuvering around. And I think it's, again, as I stressed earlier, it's really important, and, and I know that work is, is being, you know, that work is being done in this area, the, the transportation. I imagine the person on that committee could answer that better than I, but I know that the flow of traffic patterns really does get examined. I think that there are other ways, clearly it's a problem, speed, that, that backup, the long backup at the intersection of, of State Street and Finn Street, we really need to look at that, and, and we need to look at how people then avoid that by making cut-throughs and, and I know, I'm, I'm not really sure that there's, that there's a complete path, bicyclists can't ride on the sidewalk, you've got pedestrians going there.
I do.
Well, I think the law does not really allow for, for bicyclists to ride on the sidewalk, but, but clearly, you know, it can be dangerous. I would, you know, you would think that with the serious accidents that we've had, that , that people on their own would just be much more careful. But we know that, we know that careful driving is a problem, not just in Northampton, but everywhere. People are on the cell phone, people are shaving, people are doing other things to their kids while they're driving. And, you know, I think that there really needs to be a, a, a really in-depth educational process with people about driving in the city, and it, it may require, I'm not really, I know we try to put in calming features on roads and trying to, trying to approach the problem that way, but I think that there is generally an attitude of not driving safely. And so, the more that we can just, from the time kids are getting their driving lessons, really, really work on, on safety issues with people, and, and enforce, enforce the traffic safety laws that we have in this city. Those are some steps that we could take.
Thank you, Joseph, Ward Five.
I grew up on Finn Street, right up next to the corner with Prospect Street, so I'm very familiar with the way the traffic flows through that area. It hasn't gotten better, it's only gotten worse. One of the things I look at is the intersection with Summer Street and State Street. They gotta kind of look at that infrastructure over there and figure out a way to rebuild State Street. Not so much for more flow of traffic, but for the ease of traffic through there. Add in some traffic calming to, to alleviate speeders who are trying to use State Street as a shortcut to downtown from King Street. Try to just fix up the, the intersections a little bit, all of them. The intersection with Myrtle Street, I know for a fact, talking to some of the people that walked around down in that area and talked to, they, they stated the speeders that drive down Myrtle Street. Myrtle Street is a small residential neighborhood. The unfortunate thing is, it's in between two busy streets, such as State Street and King Street. People use it as a shortcut to get, to get to a convenience store right there, or to get to King Street, or to State Street coming the other way. Finn Street is another intersection that we really need to look at, see how many vehicles are passing by that every day. There's constantly backups coming from King Street up to State Street there, backed-up traffic on State Street. It's a safety issue. I agree with you as far as riding a bicycle through there. You just cannot do it. You're taking your life into your hands in that, on State Street. So it is definitely an issue to look at, as far as traffic safety in that area.
Question four, Ward Four or Five.
Yes.
Yes.
City Council, we're here on Ward Four, six. I'm hearing tonight about knocking on doors, and I know what it's like to knock down doors. And I have a lot of value in that. And I'd like to know how many hours a day you are spending knocking on those doors, and what's the value you have learned from going into people's homes and talking with them and their concerns, please.
Is the question for?
Yes, Ward Four. I guess for all of them, I don't care. I just want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, we'll take Ward Four.
Sure, fine. Well, I've, door knocking is my new favorite hobby, actually. I think I've dropped a couple pants sizes in the process, which has been a good exercise program for me. Spend about ten hours on the weekends, averaging, you know, on Sundays a little less because of not wanting to interrupt people's time during Sunday. And on weekdays, I probably spend about two and a half hours, two to three nights a week, depending on the kid's schedule. And it's been an incredible experience. I find, you find connections to people, you, you hear about issues and problems that are on people's minds. You really, you know, you, you go down a street, you know, you knock on every door, you may not have everybody be home at that time, but the one or two conversations you have are very meaningful, and you get to get some really good insights from people who are living in a neighborhood, what are the issues in their neighborhood. And it'll surprise you sometimes. You think you go into a neighborhood and you think, okay, I know, I know what they're going to ask me about here, but it's something totally different. So I think, as I said in my opening statement, it's a very humbling experience, and I think it's going to make me a better city councillor for, for going through the process.
Thank you.
It is clumped together when going outdoor to door. I would say on the average, probably an hour a day. I'd like to point out as well that I'm on the Steering Committee with the Community Preservation Act effort, and I've also been going door to door on that effort. On the other hand, I haven't just started going door to door for this campaign. I started going door to door in two thousand and one, when the state closed the Oxbow Bridge, when I organized the South Street Neighborhood. And recently, I went door to door when Smith College declared their possible intent to build homes on Lyman Road. And we've organized forums on that issue as well. So I consider myself to be a grassroots politician, for lack of a better word, and I've been working with the community, in the community, through the Paradise City Forum, through the South Street Neighborhood Association, through the Coalition for Affordable of Northampton Neighborhoods, through the Bridge Street School PTO. So going door to door is not something that I'm doing just for this campaign, it's something that I've been doing for the last four years.
Let me do a time check too. Right now, it's about eight thirty-three, so we only have about seven minutes left total before we begin closing statements. Is there, before, could take everyone on this question? Your pleasure? Okay. Let's come to Ward Five on the same question, but should be mindful of the time, yeah?
Well, I'd like to point out to the councillor from Ward Six, that I don't have to knock on doors to find out what's going on in a city that I live and work in all day long. I, I don't sit at a desk, I'm out in the city. I talk to bankers, I talk to people buying properties, I'm on city committees, I'm out and about in the city all day long, talking to people and hearing what people have to say. I don't need to interrupt their dinner by banging on their door to find out what's going on. As far as, as what I hear from people, many of the issues we've heard here tonight, I mean, they're the same issues. Door, door knocking and being a part of the community, participating in the community, and knowing what's going on in the community are, are different things. So I wouldn't tie it just to door knocking. I talk it to living, to living here, working here, and participating in this community. That's how I choose to know what's going on, not once every two years, banging on some doors.
Well, I go out about fifteen hours a week, I've been doing it for the past four months, and I found it to be extremely enlightening in my experience. I've met a tremendous amount of dynamite people who have given me both positive and negative inputs, and I really enjoyed it tremendously. And that's why it's important for me to work towards becoming a city councillor.
Ward One.
Libicle.
Growing up and still living in this city, and also in the same ward, growing up and living in the same ward for thirty years, I, I've met and lived next to a lot of people. I don't do door knocking as much as I probably should. I do walk quite a bit, though. So I see people out and I talk to them. Unfortunately, I never get my walks done. But I discuss issues with them, and when I pulled my nomination papers and I walked around, I- around, I had two ears and one mouth. I listened to what the people had to say then, instead of walking around and spending more time walking around, talking to the same people. They have issues just like what we've talked about up here, and probably many more than what we've talked about up here. There's a very diverse unit in, in every ward here. Diversity amongst age, race, culture, work ethic, whatever it may be. I, I don't, I should knock on doors and should get more involved in the community, which I have not been, but I, I listen to what people have to say when I'm out for my walks.
Thank you, Warren.
Yes, the door knocking, as we know, is kind of a required task for any candidate, but it, it can be a challenge. Um, as we know, I think, I hate to say it, but I think the Jehovah's Witnesses have kind of ruined door knocking, for those of us who really need to. I do, and, and in my case, I have many areas of the city that say, no soliciting. I, I was, in fact, I was up at the Laurel Park Community Tag Sale, and I was stopped when I was trying to do some door-to-door, and then told very firmly that that's not allowed there. So I, but I do go to all of those areas that it is allowed, and I've had really good reception from people. Many people do appreciate seeing a face and having a contact with someone who will represent them on the city council. And they want the opportunity to be able, to know that they can call you, then to know that you're somebody that now they've met, and if an issue comes up for them, they can, you know, look you up in the phone book and give you a call, and, and express their concern and hope that you'll represent that for them at the, at the council level. So I, you know, it's a, um, in terms of time, you know, it's, it's difficult for any of us. We work, most of us, you know, work full-time and, and really are limited to evenings or weekends. And I'm really appreciative for the people who do come to the door and let me at least introduce myself and say that I'm running for city council in this ward, and then hear what they have to say.
Thank you. Last question of the night. Yes.
Can I ask, Richard, Clarice Ward one, very quick question to everybody. When the two don't coincide, which would determine your vote on city council, your personal judgment and conscience, or the majority wishes of your constituents?
You repeat my question, so we can hear it.
Sure. On city council, when the two do not coincide, which would determine your vote, your personal conscience and judgment, or the majority wishes of your constituents?
Okay, yes, Warren. Well, um, we do live in a representative government, and in that respect, people vote for people with the understanding that they will, in the, in the, in the final instance, make their decision based on their own personal judgments. That's, that's the way that I would have to cast votes, even though I would, and I would explain to any constituent that called me and talked to me, I would say, I am going to tell you how I feel, and this is, this is my personal judgment on a particular situation, and I have to, I have to vote as I would as a person. And so I think that that is, you know, that's, that's what I would have to do.
Majority tends to rule a lot of things. Personal judgment, on the other hand, could play a big hand, and to what, I would decide. My thing is, is to try to meet halfway. Work with community, the community to come up with some middle ground. But in most cases, I would go with what the majority would want, as long as it makes sense and I've researched it and found that it, it works. And it works for the community, not just for the ward, but for the community as a whole.
Thank you, Ward four, yeah.
Obviously, when an issue comes before anyone, there's your own personal judgment. I've witnessed city council meetings where there's an issue, a debatable issue, and heard various city councillors state that twenty people called them, or thirty people called them, and twenty out of thirty felt this way. And I don't know, however, if that's a majority of the ward or the city. It's not necessarily a majority, it's, those are just the people that decided to pick up the phone and call or send an email. So how I would forge a judgment is to, is to probably hold some forums on the issue, invite the ward out, see who shows up, discuss the issue at length with the people that show up, and then use my best judgment then. But understand, that does not mean it's a majority of the people in the ward, those are the people who chose to show up. And I guess the world is run by those who show, choose to show up.
Thank you. Amy.
I think the city councillors were gonna be called upon to make hundreds and hundreds of decisions and hundreds of judgments, and, and that's what we're elected to do. We're elected to try to represent the best interests of the people of our ward. And so, when confronted with an issue, I'm gonna have to, people are gonna have to know that their city councillor is gonna take a look at all sides of issues, that they're gonna, that I'm gonna do my research, and that I'm gonna come up with a decision that I think is in the best interest of the ward, and the city, for that matter. And the two may not be, may not always agree. I think obviously, if I'm doing my job as a city councillor, I'm gonna really have a sense of what the, what the feelings are in the ward about a particular issue, and what the impacts are to the ward about an issue. So I think it'll be an easier process. I mean, we don't have polling, thank goodness, and I don't think you'd wanna make decisions that way. I think people elect you, they entrust you with the power to, to make the judgments about what's in the best interest of the ward. And again, I, I entered this fully expecting that half the people are not gonna agree with me half the time, that's part of the business. But, but leadership, leadership is about making tough decisions, and sometimes they're not popular decisions. And I'm prepared to make those kinds of decisions, and I'm prepared to make, cast those kinds of votes if I have to.
Thank you. Finally, Ward five, David.
A hypothetical question, which is what that was. My conviction tells me one thing's right, but the majority of the residents of my ward feel in other direction is proper and want me to vote that way. I mean, I am a representative of those people. If in fact I feel strongly one way and most of my ward feels another way, I'll vote with my ward, that's what I'm there to do. I'd like to think as a lifelong resident of the ward, I have a pretty good feeling for the pulse of the ward, but if my personal feelings don't agree with the bulk of my constituents, I still have to represent them and vote in their favor.
Kathleen.
I would also have to vote with my constituents. My, my whole campaign has been about representing the people that I'll be working for. So even if my opinion differed in a specific situation, I would have to vote for my constituents.
Thank you. Well, that was the final question. We're going to go into the closing statements portion of this forum. So each candidate will have time to give closing statements. And, um, let's see, I wanna remind you of a couple of things. Again, tonight's forum will air on Sunday at eleven AM and eight thirty PM on Channel fifteen. Also, Paradise City Forum will be holding a mayor or forum on November second, it's a Wednesday night, so just mark your calendars for that. And let's see, I think that's all. I do wanna thank everyone, all of the candidates and all of you who participated, if you would just... And let's see, which way, I think we begin that way, so we'll end with closing statements coming, no, from this side. From Ward, Ward five. Kathleen? You, you always leave the hard part, I know. It's all right. Thank you.
I believe the responsibility of any elected official is to accurately represent the people who elect them. If elected as your city councillor, I will do this by seeking out the concerns and opinions of you, the people who live in this ward, brainstorm with you, and then work to resolve concerns and the impact of those. I have always believed that people like us have the ability to find a positive solution to every issue which is important. I wanna empower my neighbors to take the actions they want for those concerns. I will work alongside of you to accomplish these tasks. I feel I would be a great Ward five city councillor since I am familiar with the issues, I am approachable and accessible, and outside of family vacations, I am here in town. I have children both presently and previously in the school systems, and I investigate concerns and seek out resolutions. If elected as your city council representative, I cannot and would not ever vote with a clear conscience on important issues which can impact ward residents without first seeking opinions on the situation, and then I'd have to cast my vote for what most of you wanted. The office, if you vote me in, isn't about my opinion, it's about yours. When I speak at the city council meetings, I will bring forth your voices and opinions, not mine. I care about our ward and how council decisions and votes will impact us. I am a grassroots individual who has walked the ward, knocked on doors, and spent time with my constituents. I am human, which means I will also make mistakes along the way, and asking for your vote and your support as Ward five city councillor, November eighth. Thank you.
I'm a positive person. I've worked hard in Northampton, and I've invested, I think, the most important commodity anyone can in the city for the last twenty years, and that's my volunteer time on committees and commissions in civic organizations, trying to make this a better city to live in. I also, I'll answer your questions, there wasn't a question you asked, asked me tonight that I didn't answer for you. Even if it didn't happen to go with the majority, I'll tell you how I feel on issues, and I'll work hard for you. I'd like to be your councillor from Ward five, so thank you for your time this evening.
Ward four.
Thank you. I, once again, would like to thank the Paradise City Forum and all the members of the Steering Committee for putting go to this forum and giving us an opportunity to introduce ourselves to the voters formally, and to have a chance to answer questions and talk about some of the issues in our wards and across the city. As I said at the outset, I really am running in this election because I believe that Northampton is a great city, it's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to own a business, it's a great place to raise a family. And I believe that we have a number of important challenges that are facing us, and I believe we need to have people who have experience, who have leadership skills, and who have the ability to bring people together in a positive way to find solutions to the problems that we're facing. I also wanna say a special thank you to my family. I think, as we all know up here, the life of a candidate causes you to make adjustments in your family life, and I wanna thank my wife, Yalena, and my two children for allowing me the opportunity to, to be a candidate, because I couldn't be doing this without the support of my family. Again, I'd like to thank the voters for giving me the opportunity to knock on their doors, and to, and to be in their living rooms, and to stand on their porches, and to talk about the issues that are important to them. And I'd like to ask them to consider me on November eighth and give me their vote, and I promise you that I will be a fair and effective and a positive representative on the Northampton City Council. Thank you.
Again, my name is Daryl G. LaFleur. I'm running for candidate of Ward four city council. I'm asking for your vote on November eighth. If you would like to view my comprehensive platform, please go to darrelglafleur.com. There, I've laid out the ideas that I've heard from working in the ward, and talking to residents, and, and the city officials as well. I definitely want to bring a civil approach to dealing with our city government, and I wanna address, as Ward four councillor, two very important issues. One is Hospital Hill development. That's slated to bring over eight thousand vehicle trips a day to Ward four between South Street and West Street. We can look at what happened recently with the WARC tour to see what about six thousand vehicles a day did to our city and Route ninety-one. And the other issue is Smith College expansion. West Street and part of Elm Street is going to be affected by Smith College expansion. The recent development agreement that was entered into by the city in Smith College will allow for eighty-five-foot tall buildings along State Street, Round Hill Road, West Street, Prospect Street. I'm not sure I agree that we should be allowing eighty-five-foot buildings in that area. I'm not sure that we should be removing Northampton's history, Northampton's neighborhoods, Northampton's homes. So I hope to bring a civil dialogue on these issues to the city. And again, please vote for Daryl G. LaFleur on November eighth. Thank you.
And Ward one, Joseph.
Not up here to make any promises, but there is one promise I'm gonna make, is if I'm voting as city councillor of Ward one, I will do my best to become more involved in this community, whether on committees, or talking to people, knocking on doors, or whatever I can do to help people get out there and start becoming more part of the community and becoming a voice here. I, I work the voting polls, I've worked them for the past three years, and other than the president being voted in, I do not see enough voters coming out and voting and voicing their opinions as far as who they want in there and what issues they want to be yes or no, on or off the ballot. There's been a lot of issues lately, over the past few years, not enough voters. It's time to get people out there, voting, and helping themselves in the community as much as the city councillor is helping too. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I also want to thank the Paradise City Forum for hosting this discussion. I wanna thank everybody who's running this year, because I think it's raised a level of discussion across the city. People are really talking about issues, and people are interested in voting. And I think that at the municipal level, that, that hasn't really been an experience for a while. So I, I'm really glad to be part of that this year. I'm also really glad to have the opportunity to run in a city that I really care about. I love living here, I'm really active in my community, and I, and I bring experience working on many city committees and, and many community groups to this, to this race. I wanna continue working in this city because it really is a way to give back. And, um, working on the city council, especially in a time when people have a general kind of distrust of government, it seems, really allows people to have that first point of contact with someone in their neighborhood, and someone who can really help them with the tax problems they might have, or particular traffic concerns, or, or even neighbor, neighborly issues. The opportunity to bring people together and to mediate among people is really something that I enjoy doing. I do it every day in my job, and I find a lot of satisfaction doing that kind of work. So if I'm given the opportunity to represent the citizens of Ward one, I would really, I would really work hard, and, and I would honor that as a trust given to me by the people of the city. So, again, I am asking for your support on November eighth, I'm asking for your vote, and regardless of the outcome of the election, I'll continue to work for the city of Northampton in whatever way I can to make this a great place to live.
And thank you to all of the candidates, a big thank you to Paradise City Forum for hosting this event, and thank you to you for coming, showing up, being here, yes? And I think that's all of us. There's an announcement from Paradise City. Mike, are you okay? Everything okay? All right. Good night, have a very safe journey home. Good night, have a very safe journey home.
Actually, I was listening to baseball.